I call this meeting of the Perryton Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members are present. This meeting has been duly called. Notice this meeting has been posted in accordance with Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Would you all pray with me, please? Dear Heavenly Father, we're so very, very grateful for the opportunity you've given us to serve. We ask that you be with us this evening, that you be with all the members of our district, the students, the teachers, administrators, staff workers, everyone who has input on our kids, that their input for our kids are within your will for them. Be with us tonight as we make decisions for the district that also our actions, our votes, our directions, our discussions are within your will. In thy heavenly name we pray. Amen. Do we have anyone for open forum? Do not. Reports start with superintendent's report. Mr. Brown.
Okay, we're gonna begin with recognitions tonight. We've got several recognitions that we need to make. First is going to be recognizing our all-region choir. If I could have the choir, the choir kids come in. We're ready for the choir.
Bring 'em on.
While they're filing in, let's just let you guys know these are coming from our junior high. These are our all-region choir members. These are ones that have either qualified for one or two choirs. They've qualified for Saturday, October 14th, going to the TBA Junior High All-Region Choir. Or they are also, we have students who have qualified for the sixth grade choir. So we're gonna have them file in so that you guys can get a good look at 'em. Come on in, you guys. I do have to say as a former choir director that it is a big deal when you make an all-region choir.
It is.
These students compete from others, or compete against other students their age for a spot in these choirs. And so it's not a small thing when you get selected. These are selected as some of the best singers in our area, and they're gonna be representing Perryton on October 14th in the Junior High All-Region Choir and the Sixth Grade Honor Choir. So I would like to read their names, and if I read your name, give a little wave so that we can recognize you. Riley Yatman, Reagan Yatman, Aileen Gaetan, De'Nari Castaneda, Karina Perez, Alexa Urebe, and Landon Lynch. Those students have qualified for the all-region, Junior High All-Region Choir. And qualifying for the Sixth Grade Honor Choir are Xavier Hernandez, Zaylee Leal, Carla Leanos, Cindy Shigadans, Emily Hernandez, Lizeth Hernandez, Faith Gonzalez, Abel Ramirez, and Adeline Ree. These are our Junior High All-Region Choir students and Sixth Grade Honor Choir students.
Congratulations, y'all.
Thank you, everybody. Good job. Very proud of you guys for your accomplishments. And the next junior high group we're gonna be bringing in is our cross-country boys. They'll be filing in here in just a second.
It's a big squad.
It is. A lot of them out there. Our, by the way, our Junior High Choir program is led by TK Aruda. She was here organizing the kids. And this is quite a crew coming in. I just wanna brag on these gentlemen for just a little bit. The boys' junior high cross-country team has done exceptionally well this year. They are led by our coach Stacy Erickson. And they qualified or won first in district, is that right? They're here because they're, they won first in the district meet. So we are super proud of you guys.
And they also won four out of their six meets. I mean, two they didn't, and one they got second.
Yeah, these are some of our stars here. And let me read, I'm gonna read you guys' names. When I read your name, just give a little wave so we can recognize who you are. Aaron Siniseros.
You can do it, Stacy.
Okay. Adrielle Ramirez, Ethan Ruelis, Jacob Erickson, Darian Russell, Joelle Ramirez, Kayden Hargus, Conley Felix, Caleb Manras, Alex Grajeda, Angel Banda, and Elian Ramos. I miss anybody. Okay. Congratulations, you guys. Good job. Very nice, gentlemen. And congratulations to you two for services. Can you, can somebody bring the principals that are out there into, into the, have all the principals come into this area? Stacy, would you grab the principals?
Principal.
I guess one of these are waiting.
Come in, just, just stand right over there.
Keep moving. Everybody in.
All principals.
I'm gonna close the door behind you.
Turn off the camera.
Not first, I'll read to them.
This is October, and October is Principal Recognition Month. And so we have, we prepared a little presentation for our principals. You guys will give me three minutes, about three minutes of attention.
I'm thankful for my principals. I'm thankful for my principal. I'm thankful for our principals. I am grateful for our principals because...
I'm thankful for my principals because they have changed the school, they have helped everyone.
Because they truly have the best interest for not only the staff but our students.
Because she keeps us safe.
For leadership, for guiding us, for directing us, showing us exactly what it is to be a leader.
Because she is kind.
Because they know the name of every student on this campus.
Because she is, she cares for us.
Because she is positive, she has great energy.
Because she is very good, she makes good choices for us.
I am thankful for my principal because he protects us, loves us, and gives us snacks on Fridays.
Because he truly loves what he does, and he takes care of the kids, he takes care of the teachers, and he brings his candy on Fridays.
Because he protects our school and makes sure that we're safe.
Because he supports the faculty, students, and parents.
Because he loves us and cares for us.
Because he's truly passionate about what he does and treats us like his family.
I'm thankful for my principals because they always make sure that everything in school is going well and they keep us safe.
I appreciate Mrs. Wheeler and Mrs. Jenkins for all the support they always give.
Because they keep our school safe.
Because they make sure everyone, like why they need to be aligned, and they support us.
Because they make sure that school is safe for everybody.
Because they're very supportive.
Because they always think about our mental health.
I'm thankful for my principal because she's super understanding. She allowed me to come to school, and she just, she does a lot for me.
I am so thankful for our principal, Shannon Jackson. She loves these kids, and she has their best interests at heart. And not only that, she has her staff's best interests at heart. And I couldn't ask for a better principal, she's amazing.
I'm thankful for my principal because she has been integral to supporting our school spirit and improving it.
Because they are true leaders on this campus.
Because she encourages me and is always supportive.
Because they are so passionate about our students, our teachers, and just our staff as they have our best interest in us.
They are very supportive of anything that we need.
Because they inspired me to propose to my girlfriend for homecoming, and they inspired me to be the best I can be.
Because they are making a better school culture.
Good job. So in honor of principal appreciation, I have you this little presence for you guys. Snack, enjoy it.
I thought you were dodging me and you minded me.
We don't have the assistance.
And I wanna say that you, y'all kinda tricked us about the students and staff who, you asked for us to gather to speak. So the topic was about the bond, and so I didn't know that kindergarteners could speak on the bond, so I'm sorry that I didn't want to hear it from the kindergarten staff.
I could've, she'd have given you a graph. But good job, that was sweet.
So that was, it was a little sneaky. We had a video under the pretense of that this was a bond video. But we did want to let them express their appreciation, you guys. And as you guys know, having a good leader on the campus makes a huge difference, and we have five good leaders plus our assistants on the campuses. So you guys, thank you for everything you do for our kids, we appreciate you.
Just thank you.
Kids and staff.
Yeah. And now, you guys have to get ready for, now you guys have to get ready to give your reports.
Campus reports while you're here, and we have added for reports that we have a place to give said reports. And that does, it's not look like the microphone is on.
It is.
Is it?
I think it's live, they're kinda older than last, but yeah.
I'm old and sometimes blind. Ms. Chatter.
Things are going okay. We have seventeen students, and I wanna share with all of you that the DAP issue for vaping has kind of settled a little bit, and so I feel like that's really positive. And we do have some other issues that have come up. I shared with you that we are serving a couple of students from other districts. And I want you to know also that I've been in contact with multiple school districts in the Panhandle and even farther south than that, older employees or ex-employees that have moved on, and asking lots of questions about how we're dealing with that. So I find it interesting that we're all talking and how this DAP thing is gonna work. And so just lots of little things, moving parts, and getting to collaborate with other principals. So it's been really interesting. And we have, we'll have eight in DAP by the end of the week. So, not bad.
Thank you. Perryton High School.
Things are moving along smoothly at the high school. Nothing new to add. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Wheeler, Junior High.
Well, I think you saw, things are going really, really well at the junior high. We have district champions and honor choir members, and the kids are just really performing, and we're raising those expectations, and they're rising to meet them, so it's really exciting. I was gonna add something. Oh, the Target Improvement Plan is ready for, for sending to, I've sent it to Region 16. However, I talked to Stacy Barnett today, and they have halted tip submissions until accountability, their TEA is working through the accountability, because no school district can set goals. We used our, you know, our star scores that we've been sent, our preliminary scores, so we already have that data in it, and it's ready to go. But until we have official taper reports, we're not sure what that's gonna look like yet. So Stacy said we'll just stay in touch and stay in contact and move forward from there.
Yay, TA!
They're our favorites.
Thank you.
Thanks. I have a lot to say. It is all great at Williams, and I've been seeing a lot of things like that, but man, you know, that's what really matters. That, that's why we do this, and I, it is true, I bribe them with candy and food, and I do love them, and our attendance is ninety-eight percent, so it's all great at Williams.
Well, I kinda draw the short end of the stick, having to go after Reed with his ninety-eight percent attendance rate. But our littles at Kinder and Wright are, you know, working hard to be at school, they enjoy school, and things are going great at both campuses. We are finishing up the first wave of testing for TPRI and Texas KIA, so those things are going really well. You know, there is so much improvement from all students from the beginning of the year to now. It's just like a different building when you walk in, especially pre-K and Kinder. And so it's just great to see how much they grow each and every day. I mean, truly, each and every day. So that video was very touching, so thank y'all so much. Y'all have questions for me?
No question.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Move on to director's reports.
Yes, sir. I don't have much to add to my report, other than we did get units set at the high school last Wednesday. Duck work's all done on the inside, still waiting on control people from Johnson Controls to come, and waiting on the thermal duck that goes between the unit into the wall on the outside. Soon as all that's done, they're ready to fire up.
And then it'll be twenty degrees.
Yeah, we'll be, we'll be firing heaters, yes.
Is that a supply issue, Alan, or just getting them up here?
I guess so. I really don't have the answer to that, Bryce.
But they are in place.
The units are sitting on the, I'm sorry.
The duck work looks good.
Yeah, it does, it looks nice.
I've seen pictures of the duck work showing up on Facebook on occasion.
Yeah, everybody's like...
Everybody's taking pictures and saying, hey, look what's coming.
Yeah, so great. Be nice, you will.
Any questions? Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
IT Department, I saw, Ivan, there he is.
I really don't have anything else to add to the report. Everything's going well.
Okay, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
As I say, Ms. Uglie is not here, so her report is here. Have questions from the report? Can, get them to her.
What's a self-assessment? Are they talking about, you know?
It is a requirement now, especially if we're, right now we're being, it's called cyclical monitoring.
That's what I was like, wondering what all that was.
So every three years, TEA will do what's kinda like a desktop audit, some module audit. And so part of the audit process is you have to rate yourself on certain criterias on how you think you're doing on these things, and so that's what self-assessment is.
And then all the information about the audit, that makes sense. Okay.
Good service as well.
Everything's going good, busy as can be, and we're working on doing a new commodity ordering system, and it's way different. But they took the middlemen out of Region 17, and so it's all gonna be on us, so, anyway. But everything's going good.
How are the IOUs? Same as always. But you aren't seeing any spike in that, over this time last year.
About the same.
Charlotte came home really excited because it was corn dog day, so. The lunches are apparently hit.
AD Report.
He said they are still at football practice.
Still at practice. We have the report, which we can ask questions about later then.
Yeah, I'm doing something.
Next up, Communications and Safety.
Nothing on communications. On safety, we did have a door open at the junior high.
Open or unlocked?
Open. And it just so happened that Region 16 was here that day to do a door audit, but we are taking the steps to remedy that. We've already gone to the faculty meeting at the campus and talked to them about it. We are creating a training for substitutes that we will give to them on November 6th, and just taking care of that issue.
How often is Region 16 unlocked? I mean, that's just...
Last, yeah, just random. Last year, they came two or three times, I think.
It's one senior per campus, so this was, yeah, this was the junior highs.
Questions?
Have you had the timeline, any?
Oh, yeah, I added the timeline in there. I'd sent it to Mr. Brown and Mr. Beal just to kinda get a feel for what I needed to add, because I've never been through a bond before. But if y'all have any input, send it to me. And I'd like to put that probably in the paper, on the website, on Facebook, just so we give some, you know, the public something to look at as far as when we're gonna spend the money, how fast the process is going, so.
My only input would be to spell out the acronyms. We are a world of acronyms, nobody else knows what.
Okay.
Like RFQ, I was like, does that mean quote qualifications? Like, I don't, like, I know what it is, but I don't wanna say it.
That's an easy fix.
For the, for the public, and those watching online, I would say, so right now, the bond process, our RFQ, which is called, which is Request for Qualifications. And basically, that's a letter that we put out, say we're doing an construction project, send me, send us your qualifications and your company. And those qualifications will develop, will narrow it down to a few, somewhere two to five probably, that we ask for a request for proposal, which means that based on what we decided we're gonna do, you propose, as a company, you propose what plans you would do, how much you would charge, or what it's gonna cost. So right now, we're in the RFQ phase. That RFQ has been posted in the paper. We have not received any yet, but it should be coming here fairly soon. We should receive any RFQs that we're gonna get, and then we'll do the selection process. So we are, we are moving forward in the process. And we will be working on putting some stuff on the website so that people can see what we're, what we're doing, so that there's some, they can kinda watch the process at home. This, this part right now is a harder part, because there's nothing, no construction happening, and so everyone thinks it's stalled. It's not really stalled, we're, we just have a whole process of selecting a company and then designing and making decisions as far as finishes, things like that. So that's where we're at. We're moving forward.
Other questions? Thank you, ma'am. Ranger Roundup.
I don't really have any additions. Our CACFP application is still pending currently, as of this afternoon. And so we're just waiting to hear back. I do have to resubmit a form that we've submitted several times. Shelley and I are thinking there's a hang-up and confusion on that we're two separate departments, so we're gonna reach out to Region 16 and try to get that worked out. And I know y'all probably received a notification on an investigation that we were under. Just anytime a child gets hurt on campus, we have to report that to the state, regardless of how severe it was. And so we had a child fall and scrape her chin, investigation was closed out, and there were no deficiencies or any findings, so. Any questions?
Kids fall down the line.
They do. They do, and our rolls just keep getting, you know, more and more, but, thank you.
Good, thank you very much. Critical intervention.
Good evening. As Ms. Wheeler mentioned earlier, we still do not have accountability results. TEA's saying first, who possibly middle of November. I really don't have anything additional to add to the report. And following my report is the Required Bilingual ESL Annual Program Report, which it shows the progression of our EB or ESL students over the course of a couple of years. For the most part, there was a nice increase in all areas. There were a couple that, that did dip. And reading was good, math was good, but a couple of areas that we showed a little bit of a dip. We have science and social studies. Ms. Campbell couldn't be here tonight. She did, she's the one that created the report. She talked about the number of exceptions that we're having to file or waivers, and a lot of that is due to just the number of new teachers that we hired this year that aren't certified teachers. If you're not a certified teacher, you can't be an ESL certification. So working on ways to try to get those teachers certified to be more in compliance. Any questions on her report?
So we have seven or eight bilingual classes?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
And there's two bilingual teachers that are certified. I think with the exception of Kinder, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, Kinder has one.
She has to file an exception also for fourth and fifth grade, even though we're not to that point yet. So that's what kinda makes the number look a little inflated.
But we still don't have, they're not all certified bilingual in all bilingual.
Yes.
And that's just a staffing, my colleague said.
Yeah.
How long do we get to keep filing extensions? How long will the state allow us?
I think we've been filing extensions now, from what I understand, for like eight years.
District of innovation.
So until they change something, we're, as far as we know, we're good to go to continue with the exceptions and we're in compliance.
That's just a really important program, I'm like...
It is, and I'll double-check with Ms. Campbell and get...
I'm sure we're in compliance, I just want it to succeed.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like you want that hundred percent to cap it out, it's just such a struggle to get the certified teachers, especially bilingual.
And we have the stipend on the ballot. Or the, or the, not the stipend, the starting bonus.
And I believe we've got those now, both.
We have a pretty good stipend.
Stipend and the starting bonus.
Certified teachers in minor level class. They, I would say, just because finding certified teachers, finding any certified teacher is pretty hard these days, especially bilingual. Having waivers and exceptions is pretty common in bilingual programs to have a pretty good running total of waivers and exceptions until those teachers get certified.
Other questions? Thank you very much. See you, photo form.
Not too much to add. The expenses all look a little unbalanced right now, just because there's a lot of expenses we have to pay for the year at the beginning. Nothing alarming. Food service, it's not as bad as it looks. We didn't, we're not gonna recognize the income yet because we haven't received it, and they skipped over all this payment for some reason. It's a whole, which they're, yeah. They're working with the comptroller on. We've received about a hundred thousand in interest on the bonds so far. Well, that was as of the date of this report. And then we're sitting at about eighteen fifty-ish. Remember that eighteen seventy-four includes your half-day precares and all that, so it's not exactly, it's skewed.
I can just look it up in a moment. Just to update you guys, this Friday is the Friday weekend for the high school. And last Friday, when I had Mrs. Barnett giving me the number, it was five hundred ninety. We're going to make sure that we cleaned up our attendance and enrollment this week to make it the most accurate possible. I would say five ninety, I don't, I'd give it a fifty-fifty chance, the last, the last go-round.
Top forty-five?
Yeah, it was, yeah, that was, that was about forty more than it was the previous. So if they hold the same, the same pattern, it's gonna be close.
We missed about ten.
Yeah.
It's not gonna...
No, so we're gonna, we're gonna make sure our number is as accurate as possible this week. And then that's, that's what we have control of. Then we're just gonna see, the things that we don't have control of, we'll just have to see on it.
And I skipped over one item, which is Sarah's trip to go visit with the smart people.
Skipped over two, didn't you, President? The resignation. We do, I do need to, I do need to report to you guys that Baron Lazzara, seventh grade math, has a resignation about two weeks ago. And her last date was right. And her last date was Friday.
Mr. Gellis and Mr. Brown both went to the Tasbe convention here three weeks ago. And I asked Sarah to have a short little report, just kind of some of the things that they had seen. Um, Did I slip that word in there?
Let me get a timing.
Just some of the things that they saw going down there, um, some of the ideas maybe that they saw in business with some of that. I think a lot of times, events like that, sometimes just visiting with other, other attendees, you learn as much or more than you in the session.
Yeah. You learn quite a lot. Okay. Do you have anything you want to say about what you?
Probably, there was lots of discussion, uh, and probably the most useful discussion that I went to, or the most useful session I went to was from, um, it was, it was a presentation on the Charles Butts Foundation, who is the guy that owns HEB. And every year, they do a survey on teacher satisfaction, uh, teacher morale, basically. And I found that was very interesting. There was some surprising data in there, um, that some surprising, some not. Again, some of the, um, the anchors on teachers' morale at the moment are feeling overwhelmed with many things to do. Uh, teacher pay was on that list, but it wasn't number one on the list. Uh, it was mainly not having time to, uh, to accomplish the things that they need to, to accomplish, or the things that they're being asked to accomplish. And, um, having, uh, just a general satisfaction with the way their school or education is going. So, um, I found that data very interesting and want to, I want to do what we can here at Perryton ISD for our teachers.
Great. Um, okay. Will you pass those? Did everybody get one? Okay. So I'll go in order. The delegate meeting is the part that, um, super secret just for school members, I guess. Um, and the main takeaway is that the agenda for Tasbe is made at these grassroots meetings, um, between January, March. Here's the flow, if you want to pass that around. Um, of where it all comes from, and it comes directly from members. And if the data I was given is right, seventy-eight percent of school districts are rural. So if actually every school district showed up, Austin wouldn't have to. And there's grassroots meetings start, you don't even, so that starts it without even having to go to this delegate meeting. Um, so I think it's really important that we have a representative or two or five go, because the only ones that went last year, when they set the agenda, they do it every two years, um, was maybe Canyon and Immerillo ISD. So again, the big schools in Region Sixteen. Region Sixteen tends to be more conservative, obviously. Um, but I think it's so important we go. Um, in the actual delegate meeting, you have a regional caucus that, sorry. What? And actually, a Region Sixteen delegate proposed an amendment to one of the agenda items that we were gonna pass, and it passed. She made it more conservative, and everyone passed it overwhelmingly. Um, and then a lot of the things that Tasbe or the Tasbe leadership decided to pass altogether, actually, people filed to pull them individually and talk about them individually. And they were either made a lot more conservative, or they got squashed. Um, and surprisingly, even Dallas ISD was fighting against Austin. Austin just has this own agenda, and they have the staff to be pumping all these out. That's why they have more paperwork in here than everybody else. They're the only ones playing ball. But everybody else was kind of fighting back, and mostly it was successful. And they actually pulled one that wasn't recommended, and it passed. The problem with all that is, okay, does it matter what's in here if the lobbyists aren't necessarily successful? So that's the next step. But at least getting the agenda right is the first step. And then when you figure all that out, it's on there. And those rumors about Tasbe being liberal and squishing, um, parent comment and stuff, it sounds like that's coming from a couple of school districts that were tired of paying Tasbe fee and this other company that is saying, oh, Tasbe's doing this, this, and this, and we can do this for you cheaper. So they signed up with them, and now they're, those school districts are mostly headed back to Tasbe because those companies are not. So there's the, um, dramatic part. But, um, they will release when those meetings, the grassroots meetings in the region are here at the, um, first of November. So I will update everybody when those are. Um, so as far as sessions, stuff that I went to some TeachWorthy PACE, um, alternate certification stuff and passed that off to Mr. Brown. And one of the more interesting classes I went to was about facilities, maintenance, and resources. And it was shocking to me that they used to be able to build a new high school for what we're renovating, like, five years ago. So the cost of all, everything is up so high that the value of our maintenance department is increasing because if they ain't broke, don't fix it. You don't have the money to fix it. So, um, we also need to communicate, um, with the community, and we're doing a good job with that, with communication. So they trust us that we are managing that bond well, because so much of it is paperwork and, um, permits and things like that. But if they don't trust us, we got no chance of ever doing it again in short term, and we'll need to, we've got other old buildings. Um, so we are grateful for our maintenance staff that has strong mobile, they're building about as far as they possibly can, and for what they're doing for us currently. So I was grateful having good staff because that was overwhelming. It was a packed room, um, that everyone was saying having, having those people is a life changer. Um, Region Sixteen did a presentation. They were part of a presentation, raising rural voice and collaborative partnerships. Um, basically talking about CET co-ops for smaller areas. We're a little spread out, but it could work. Um, we'd offer more student things, hearing with Spearmen, Canadian, things like that, and they bus kids back and forth to one school have welding, one won't. Brittany's like, please don't do that. The finance, but it's done through like a nonprofit. The school doesn't really run the money. Um, but Region Sixteen seems to be the source for that, so they wanna do that.
They find a way to count all those high school kids in our enrollment.
Exactly. Yeah, exactly. Can we get those, um, Canadian football players? Um, and then there are some lead rural initiatives, but those are, um, they're trying to promote rural schools and what they're doing. So, um, Mr. Brown has contacts with all of those. If we want to add that to his to-do list, we're trying to recruit him for the second group of lead rural, um, class and but I was like, hmm, we're doing a bond and some other things, but, um, they were the ones that had that. Seventy-eight percent of school districts are rural, but we get one-fifth of the funding. So we need to go to these things and, and fight basically for our half and get all the other rural schools to go and fight for us. Um, but Classroom to Capital Felton ISD makes these amazing little fact cards that people, and mainly school board members can walk around with, talk about. I only got one, so you get to him when we're done. Then they have a legislative priority base about for everyone to talk about. All this goes back to the, the vouchers, and it's, it's mainly us versus TEA or the legislature. So school board's way to push back is either through advocacy like this, or, um, you know, Tasbe through them. But they, they're doing it on their own, and they're close enough to knock them down. But they get these together every year, and it gives everybody talking points, and it powers school board members to have a, uh, more centralized voice. Sounding always good when we sound more educated and people ask a question about things we ought to know. Um, and they have resources to do that research. Um, there's also, this is in your little packet, this is a board visibility spreadsheet they get at every meeting. Um, so it's everything going on in school. They go to their city council meetings and support their community also. Those ties are important. Perryton, they're really important right now after what all's happened. Um, so instead of having all the board members go to all the same things, they don't really assign it, but it's like, hey, who's gonna go to this? And they try to attend more community events instead of just choir concert here, or everybody being in a football game there. Um, and so they've got board member initials and the events and time and date. And my question was, how do y'all have time for all of this? We all just share. I mean, they're not all going to the same thing. They go to T V month. Most of them, unless some of them work there or whatever. Um, so I thought board visibility might be a good thing, um, work on for us a long time. Um, also, it opens us up to questions, but it also keeps us knowing what's going on to be right now. And back to the legislative thing of this, if we want our legislators to do something, we need to talk to them, not just our staff. Because we are the people that voted them in, and we'll vote them in or out again, and they're more apt to respond to us. And right now, Perryton has unfortunately really good name recognition because we had really big, um, politicians come and visit for the tornado. So when we have maybe a groundbreaking for the bond, they love a photo op, we really ought to invite them back. Be like, hey, look, we're rebuilding. You should come. And they come, and that's how you build that relationship, so you can make the phone call going, this is really bad for us, or this is really good for us. We support you, things like that. Um, all these things take time. It doesn't happen overnight. But I thought that fact sheet was just like really cool. Um, so anytime you get to talk to, you know, radio or anything, having Matt in your pocket, you're like, hey, I know, that happened to the techs or remember it all. And the whole, I mean, it's not just for board members, a info card for staff handing out at meetings or wherever would be really cool. Um, I went to a security meeting, which was really depressing, um, about Uvalde. Um, they emphasized locked doors, hardened windows around the doors. Not necessarily people coming through windows. Everyone always talks about being afraid of them shooting out a window coming through. And like ninety-eight percent of the time, that's not an issue. The windows around the doors, and we're already doing a good job of that. And then there were some safety things. We'll talk about in closed session, that, that everybody with our devices. Um, also, there is a National Safety Security Protection Association that will do a free assessment when you're doing a remodel. That information, Mr. Brown and, um, Stacy and Brittany can look that up and see. I mean, it can't hurt to have them come if we totally disagree with what they do, but rather than paying for that assessment also, that we had talked about, that expert coming, the criminal, criminologist. Um, this guy's ex-military, he comes and he breaks and analyzes all these shootings. So, and it sounds like they know what they're talking about, but you know how salespeople are? So, um, but I thought that was a good takeaway to have. Call that organization. It is a dot org. They're not a for-profit that have them come look at our two buildings and say, what would you do with your device? Um, my favorite uplifting thing, um, which was in a lot of the district improvement plan, or campus improvement plans and our district improvement plan are talking about teacher retention and recruitment, and it was called Taking Care of Our Crew. Um, retention is recruitment, and talked about positivity and teachers knowing their why. That's the big push right now, is know your why, remember your why. They know their why. We need to, they struggle with the how, the time, um, getting everything done, the compliance stuff, the state stuff, like we're, we don't know what's going on with TEA. So our job in this room is the how, how they get it done, um, and to help them with that. We don't really need to remind them that kids are great and education is important, but we need to give them faith in education again. Um, and that's what this, they focused on, and these two women are all about it, and they'll come and do PV related to it, actually. Um, and we talked about that, the HEB survey of teachers, that ninety-eight percent of them said a positive work culture and environment was important, more than pay scale. Um, the thing I really thought was cool, they did T-shirts on their campus, more cowbell T-shirts. It was like, if you were a cheerleader and it's staff, you're nominated, and you could be a bus driver, a substitute, a cheerleader, maintenance, maintenance worker. You were nominated by your staff every month, by the whole staff, and then you get to wear that shirt on Mondays with jeans. Um, but you have to be like all out for education. It was really good for their, in addition to all this training, it was good for morale and motivation and work culture and just positivity. I know that the individual campuses are doing a lot of that, but I think an alignment campus or district-wide, you know, instead of doubling all the effort, might be valuable. But the cowbell shirt, everybody overwhelmingly was like, yeah, you just make it red or blue or whatever your school. And people were begging right into the year, like, how do I get a cowbell shirt so you can wear jeans on Monday? Or whatever. Um, so there's my very short thirty-second spiel. Um, it was really valuable going, talking to other, other people, and overwhelmingly, no matter what region people were from, um, they told me Region Sixteen and Region Seventeen are gonna keep us out of trouble downstate. Like, we have to show up and we have to fight, because we're the chosen. And a lot of the other places are, are not as tough as us, so it is important that we keep doing what we're doing. But they appreciated us, and so many people checked on us about the tornado, and I was surprised. People at Corpus Christi were like, how are you doing? So, um, that was cool. Everybody cares about kids, and we all had, have different problems. Nobody can hire anybody there. No teachers. Um, and a lot of these same things are all talked about here. ESL bilingual certification, it's just hard, but we have to figure out how altogether. And I, I believe in this team and our, our new leaders, and I think that's a big part of the how. Yeah. Any questions? Don't send Sarah to any conferences. She'll make us wear the ugly shirt. But they did have polos made. I was like, I think we should get some P I S D shirts.
They might be better than the ugly shirts on the picture on the stairwell.
Those were cool. That was my threat. They were just like Longhorn Texas flag, like really, really ugly party shirt. This one's school board for, so they can hide each other at the conference. I said, y'all better come next year.
I'm not sure they make them in my size.
Oh, they do.
Brittany says no.
They might be a little big for us. None of these men were petite. They were so big old boys from downtown.
Well, thank you very much. Um, it's, there are a lot of opportunities like that, but for the most part, we don't take advantage of.
No.
But you did, and we appreciate the information. Be able to, be able to come back. There's a lot of, again, just, just being able to meet and greet with other, other board members from around the state, and it's an opportunity to learn how do you take care of this issue, those types of things. Appreciate you taking the time to be able to go down there. Is that everything on our list? Okay. Boards will now convene in a closed meeting to discuss the following item, post on our agenda, as allowed by Texas Government Code. Five-five-one dot oh seventy-four Personnel Matters, five-five-one dot oh seventy-six Security Devices, and five-five-one dot oh seventy-one Attorney Consultation or Matters Involving Attorney Client Privilege. No voting will take place during a closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussion in closed session will take place after the board reconvenes in the open meeting. It is now six forty-seven.